Especially the 21st.
Mm-hmm. I do remember that.
All right. I hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, September 23rd, 2024. Mr. C. Mantridge, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Ratten.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Mayor Rowan.
Here. And with us at the dais by way of introductions, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, on my right at the far end, and city manager, Pat Trudgen, on my left at the other end. We have a number of staff, department heads, and guests who will participate in the meeting as agenda items come forward, and we'll make those introductions at that time. If you need any meeting materials to help you follow the meeting along, there is, there are extra copies of the agenda on the table underneath the clock in the back of the room. We also do have one complete three-ring binder set of all the meeting materials available for the public, if you need to look up any of the particulars of the background information for agenda items this evening. If you have a cellphone, we ask that you silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. And with that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next on our agenda is approval of tonight's agenda, and as always, we'll check with staff first to see, Mr. Trudgen, are there any changes from a staff perspective?
Mr. Mayor, there's no changes by staff.
All right. We'll check with council members. Are there any items council members would like to change on the agenda this evening, or items on the consent agenda that council members would like to have removed for separate consideration this evening?
No.
Does not appear to be the case. Speaking of the consent agenda, that's Section 10 of the agenda. If there is anyone from the public who's here on an item in Section 10, that's at the bottom of the agenda there, 10A through F, approval of payments, massage therapy license, purchases over 10,000, et cetera, those items are normally taken up as a single motion at the end of the meeting, with limited opportunity for public comment. They're fairly administrative in nature. But if you are here this evening for one of those items, this would be the time to let us know, and we'll take that item off the consent and move it earlier in the meeting so that we can hear from you if you've got a question or a comment about that item. Is there anyone here this evening for an item in Section 10 of tonight's agenda? And just to let you know, we will have public comment opportunities as other agenda items prior to that do come up. So, once again, just checking if there is anyone here for an item in Section 10. Does not appear to be the case. Do we have a motion then from the council to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next is our first opportunity for public comment this evening. This is as opposed to comment on agenda items, which will happen as those items are taken up. We do also, at the start of each meeting, provide an opportunity for general public comment on items that aren't on the meeting's agenda tonight, but may be either related to city business or items of interest to people in the community about which folks from the public might have comments. So we'll check, is there anyone here this evening to make a general public comment on an item not on tonight's agenda? All right. Feel free then to come up and have a seat at one of the two microphones, and as you're doing that, we'll just do a quick recap of the rules of the road for public comment. We would ask folks to make comments, direct those to the council. If you have questions, we may or may not be able to answer those, but certainly if it's something we can follow up on, we'll ask staff to follow up. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, and we would just ask that you start with your name and either your street or your address for the record. Hello and welcome.
Hi, I'm Matthew Drawl. I live at 2736 Greg Street North. I would like to discuss further the plans for the city works getting moved across the street. There has there been anything else considered for the residents, particularly myself and my neighbors, where it's bordering our backyards, in terms of like the property values of our house?
All right. We can certainly get you in touch with more information on that. There has been a fair amount of work that's been done through the development of the plans to help mitigate impacts, whether there are visual impacts or sound impacts, and certainly the design is not by any means finalized at this point. We're, you know, at the stage of trying to see if we can get funding for it. Depending on how that goes, then we would get into design stages, and we would, as a part of that, most assuredly have more input from neighbors as to specific issues and concerns.
Well, I mean, the biggest concern is that we're removing a park from behind our houses and putting in a industrial complex, right? And typically, for home values, having a park there with the green space and everything would be a added benefit that would typically increase a property value, whereas something industrial back there would detract from the property value.
No, certainly that's something that is part of the consideration in the decision-making. And as I said, I think there'll be some more opportunities to have conversations about that as plans are being developed and going forward.
So.
So I would stay tuned for that, and certainly we can get you in touch with information on that. Mr. Trudgen, did you have something you wanted?
No, I'll give you my card, and you reach out to me and be happy to chat with you some more. As the mayor mentioned, there is some pre-design work that just kind of shows squares and where they're at. There's a lot more work that needs to be done. Obviously, the first step would be to see if that referendum passes, if that project's moving forward. But certainly, we understand your concerns, and we take them very seriously. We do want to work with the neighborhood as much as possible. I'll give you my card, and you can reach out to me. I'd be happy to sit down with you and talk more detail with you and your neighbors.
Sounds good. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then we are concerned about the referendum too, because as came out in that latest newsletter, so either, thank you, so either it does go through, and then we have that half a cent sales tax, which would increase our costs living here, because we do spend a lot of money in this community to support it. And if it looks like if it doesn't go through, then property taxes would increase, so potentially, we're paying for it either way, and our home values might go down as a result of it. It just seems a bit unfair to us that are really directly impacted by that, to not get something, sort of compensation for that.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments and feedback. We don't necessarily have all the answers for you as part of public comment, but we appreciate hearing from you, and certainly encourage you to remain part of the process, because there'll be a number of decision points as things go forward, depending on, once again, how things go in November.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll check if there's anyone else here for general public comment this evening. All right, seeing no one then, we'll proceed with the rest of the agenda. First this evening, we do have, under recognitions and donations, a proclamation related to Indigenous Peoples' Day in Roseville. I'll read the proclamation, and then a motion from the council would be in order. The, excuse me, the proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas for longer than any other people, indigenous nations have lived upon the land where our nation and city now stand. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is an important time to celebrate the rich culture, tradition, and history that acknowledge and acknowledge the important contributions of America's original people. And whereas it is also an opportune time to educate the general public about the severe challenges American Indians have faced both historically and at the present time, and the ways in which American Indians have worked to conquer these challenges. And whereas the land in present day is located on, whereas the land in present day is located on the ancestral and contemporary lands of American Indian people and home of the original people of the Turtle Island since time immemorial, and without whom the building of this city would not have been possible, and holds great historical, spiritual, and personal significance for its important, for its original stewards. And whereas American Indians, over the many years, protected and preserved the landscape of Minnesota and the city of Roseville, including their intrinsic traditional knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, and arts, as well as their cultural belief system that stipulates that they are the protectors and stewards of the natural environment for the benefit of all. And whereas American Indian people today face significant disparities that impact their safety, health, well-being, education, vitality, and cultural preservation. And the city of Roseville understands that in order to help combat these disparities, government entities, organizations, and other public institutions should change their policies and practices to better reflect the experiences of American Indian people and uplift our country's indigenous roots, history, and contributions to ensure greater access to opportunity. Whereas in 1990, representatives from 120 indigenous nations at the first Continental Conference in 500, on 500 years of Indian resistance unanimously passed a resolution to transform Columbus Day into an occasion to strengthen the process of continental unity and struggle towards liberation, and thereby use the occasion to reveal a more accurate historical record. And whereas the Twin Cities community has a strong history of over four decades of American Indian activism, which the city celebrates and honors, now therefore be resolved that the city of Roseville hereby declares that we observe Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 14th, 2024, in order to promote appreciation, healing, reconciliation, understanding, friendship, and continued partnerships with the American Indian community."
I move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Ratten to approve that proclamation. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That proclamation is approved. That then brings us to our business items this evening. We have a handful of business items, beginning with item 7A, which is to consider resolutions and an ordinance allowing the subdivision of a parcel from the west end of the Roseville Covenant Church property and re-guide and re-zone it for low-to-medium-density residential development. We have our senior planner, thank you. I tell you, those titles just escape me sometimes. Brian Lloyd with us this evening, and we appreciate him being here to help introduce this item for our consideration. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is an application that is sort of located at 2865 Hamlin Avenue. This is Roseville Covenant Church, outlined in red there, at the intersection of Hamlin and County Road C2. And it's a sort of three-part application. Before I get into those three parts, generally speaking, the church is looking to subdivide this western 120 feet from the property and make it available to somebody to build something on. And in consultation with them in preceding months, you know, it was clear that even though they, the church themselves, don't have plans for the redevelopment, that some sort of low-to-medium-density residential would be the only sort of viable, the only reasonable choice in that location for the comprehensive plan change that's required for the application and the zoning change. So the application in front of us tonight is to change the comprehensive plan, future land use map guidance of the property from the institutional land use category that applies to it today, which enables the church to be there, change that to low-density residential, which is the same comprehensive plan guidance as for the duplexes along County Road C2 behind it. Part of the application then is the rezoning, and the rezoning that's recommended is to the low-to-medium-density residential zoning district, which allows between five and 12 dwellings per acre. This is a little bit less than half an acre. I should clarify, under the comprehensive plan guidance of low-density, the limit for density in this low-to-medium-density district is eight units an acre. The zoning district can be used in other places, which could allow up to 12. So the slightly less than half an acre parcel that's being proposed in this low-to-medium-density district could have somewhere between two and four units, practically speaking. And the third part of the application this evening then is the subdivision itself. The Planning Commission held the required public hearing for this early this month, I believe it was September 4th, and recommended approval of the low-density guidance for the comprehensive plan change, the low-to-medium-density zoning district, and recommended approval of the preliminary plat, creating this 120-foot-wide lot at the western end of the property. The only public comment that we've received since the public hearing, I believe, went directly to the city council, communication from Tam McGeehee, I presume, sort of interacting on her own rather than a representative of the Planning Commission with this communication to the city council, and sort of expressing her views on ways that a denial of these particular applications might be found to be justified or amenable to the council members. Aside from that, the Planning Commission did recommend, with a vote of five to one, the approval of these three applications that I mentioned, the comprehensive plan change, the rezoning, and the preliminary plat, with a few conditions on the preliminary plat approval related to stormwater management and the park dedication that would apply to it. And with that sort of brief summary of the item before the council tonight, I can end my presentation and see if there are any questions that I can answer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Are there questions from the council on the three items that we have before us related to this property? Councilmember Ratten.
I think one of the questions that was brought up there, and it was discussed a little bit at the Planning Commission also, is why do the comp plan and the zoning now?
Because we have an application to consider it. Otherwise, there's, the city isn't looking to sort of proactively change the way regulations apply to given pieces of property to prompt some development.
Okay. And then I have questions. Maybe better for Mr. Freyhammer around stormwater management and trees. Maybe you want to answer, but he's coming up with a smile, so.
It's probably better that he does.
It's always better that the public works director is smiling.
Yes, we like it. Can you talk about the tree preservation thing, says all the trees on Lot A would be cut down. I went by there today. Really, they're kind of centered in the lot. You really couldn't build anything. They stayed. As part of the stormwater management for the lots, though, is there a, what's the plan for the stormwater pond just to the east and the trees that are around that?
I'm not aware if the trees on that lot would be removed, but any newly created lot will trigger stormwater requirements. So potentially, they could either modify the existing pond or build another one. But I'm not aware that we've been presented how they treat their stormwater, because I think they're just looking to split the lot currently. But they would, since it is a newly created lot, they would have to remit stormwater requirements.
Yeah. I think somewhere in here, I read that certainly there was a set of neighbors who were concerned about how the pond was working. And I think I read that staff was talking about how that would be updated. We have a program of updating now, so I didn't know if there was anything in conjunction that was going to happen at the same time.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of, but yeah, that pond probably hasn't had any work done since that was originally built, so I'm sure it's overdue for work. So the timing could work out to do both, do a two-for-one.
Okay. And the proposed tree preservation ended up with 339 cal per inches. I'm guessing that that won't all fit, right? I mean, look at the.
I too am guessing that won't all fit.
The church lot, as well as this lot, just don't seem like they're going to be able to do that. So we'd end up with some, maybe a mix of some plantings and then cash into our tree preservation.
That's right. And it's difficult to say just how that might work out. In most applications where there's a subdivision being proposed and there's a larger lot being reduced in size or split into some several lots, the party that's requesting the approval of the subdivision is often one who will be involved in its development and its building. And, you know, in those instances, the trees that are, you know, on the church property today, you know, influence the calculation of what is required for replacement, given what is being removed on the proposed lot. And that is true for this, but assuming that the application is approved and this lot is created, it's at that point that the lot would be sold to somebody else who would now be working with a lot that is only this and really has nothing to do with this anymore. It's conceivable that some of the replacement trees could still be planted around the church property if the church were open to that. But, you know, the site itself is sort of becoming more isolated in terms of, you know, the ability to plant trees on a broader property that's still part of the development.
Okay.
So that'll change somewhat in the future if this is approved.
So with this tree preservation as part of this proposed series of changes, would that become the responsibility of the church?
It would become the responsibility of the party who buys and proposes to build something on the lot.
But it would be calculated based on this split this time, not the time they purchased the land?
Actually, we would recalculate it at the time that the land is purchased, just because, you know, this, the church itself is no longer part of it. And in fact, I don't remember exactly what is written in the Planning Commission report about this, but, you know, the, practically speaking, the replacement total is even larger with, you know, the sort of future scenario where it's just this lot being redeveloped, because, you know, it doesn't have the balance of trees in the church property to sort of factor into that calculation. So it's a bit academic, though, because it's still, you know, the existing replacement total, even with all the trees in the church property, lowering the replacement calculation. You know, that total is already sort of impossibly high for planting on the site. The fact that it's going to be a larger replanting obligation, most likely if something is built on the site when it's sort of considered on its own, like I said, is a bit academic. It's still impossibly high and impossibly higher at that point.
Okay.
So would result in some trees being replanted, probably, and then also a fee being paid.
So really, the stuff in the request for council action around tree preservation is more of an exercise in understanding rather than what's being required of the church or, at this point, whoever would own the land until they came in with a development proposal.
That's right. And that's essentially the same for the stormwater management plan as well. There is a stormwater management plan that was submitted with the subdivision application, because that's one of the requirements. Presumably, what is built, it will be different from what is kind of in the proposal today, so the stormwater management plan will be, you know, re-engineered at that point.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions for staff? Councilmember Strawn?
I may have misremembered, but my understanding was initially when they brought this to those, for comment, were there not more lots that they were looking to section off at that time?
The proposal has always been a single lot on the end of the property, just like this.
Okay. I must have, I looked at the public hearing and obviously didn't pay close enough attention. I'm curious about the western side. I see that the house behind that abuts, that front C2, the lot line is substantially west of the lot line of this proposed lot. It was a little bit easier to see.
Oh, this line?
No.
No?
It was easier to see on the other piece that you had there. My, I guess I interpreted that line above to be the lot line of the house behind, almost.
To the north?
Right there. Yes.
So this thing?
Yes.
So there are, there are lots here that go out to C2, and this is part of one of those lots. I think if we look at this drawing, yeah, so that lot line that I was pointing to there coincides with this one, and then this one on the corner wraps around just a little bit, it looks like, you know, leading to that line there.
Okay. The reason I ask is it, there's a pretty visible demarcation, you know, footpath from the street out to C2 along that line. So I think, is there some type of easement or something that would be addressed along there that would make that unbuildable? Or how would that, you know, it's kind of hard to see when you're out there where, of course, the line would be, because it is quite a bit off from the house on C2. But just wondering, you know, does that, it looks like it even goes beyond the street, the turn there.
There isn't any easement or formal trail through there that I'm aware of. Any sort of footpath is probably just an informal cutting through that happens. Yeah, so there wouldn't be anything encumbering the property that would kind of get in the, an easement, for instance, that would get in the way of doing some development there.
Okay. And it hasn't been requested of any, by any of the neighbors, to have a pathway or something between those two?
Not that I've been made aware of. Certainly, nobody has asked me about it, and I don't remember seeing it in the summary of the open house conversations that would have happened. I don't remember when that was. Earlier this year, when the church was first sort of introducing the idea to the surrounding renters and homeowners and property owners.
And then finally, if there was to be some future, if the church were to want to further subdivide this land in the future, what would the possibility be given that holding line?
I, practically, I think there wouldn't be a possibility. I suppose someone could engineer a situation where all the stormwater is managed in some underground improvements below a new development here, but I don't think that's a practical outcome. I think, you know, there is this 120-ish feet of land that isn't used for something on the site today and would be the limit of kind of what's available to be used. the limit of kind of what's available to be used in some other way.
Okay. Thank you.
Just as a follow-up to that, I imagine that the only way, given the stormwater ponding that's there, would, if the site was decided to be used for something completely different and completely rearranged and starting from scratch almost, that would be about the only way that something could be done.
Sure.
If things are left the way they are, it doesn't, as you said, doesn't appear to be the case, that there would be an opportunity to do further subdivision of that property. Councilmember Strong.
Has there been a previous use of this site that would potentially have other pollution or anything on the site that hasn't been discussed prior to now?
I think certainly not on this western end. In historical aerial photos, there is some visible buildings. I think a farmhouse over here, and most of this was just field. And at some point, ending in the early 90s, when the church was built here, there had been a couple of other buildings, I think probably in about this location. They looked sort of residential in scale in the aerial photos. I don't know what they were for sure, though. But this has always been vacant and not the home of some industrial use or no apparent land filling sort of activity.
Other questions? Councilmember Schroeder?
Just curious. You made a comment about work needing to be done on this pond eventually. What would that entail?
So typically, any BMP or best manager practice, like a pond, typically involves at least a minimum of dredging. So most likely, I'm sure sediment has accumulated. So cleaning out the inverts, the inlets and outlets, that's typically what it is. Sometimes vegetation can be problematic, too, if that's causing some of the problems. So either vegetation removal and/or just sediment removal.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Graff?
Just going to the tree preservation. When we do the final witnesses sold and welcomes, do they analyze the health of the trees and all that sort in more detail? That's what my understanding is.
That's right. That's part of the input, the inventory of the trees. And if there are, I don't recall there being ash trees in this location, but where there are ash trees, even if they seem fine still in spite of emerald ash borer, we've been guided by our consulting forester to just go ahead and remove those, because they will be ailing from the pest sooner than later. So there are considerations like that that are made, the current health of the tree or the sort of future outlook from diseases or pests and that sort of thing.
Just on a quick walkthrough, it was a lot of cotton trees, which have weak limbs.
Sure.
Nice. Great. If there aren't any other questions from councilmembers, I don't know if a representative of the applicant wishes to make any kind of statement in support of the application. That's totally optional. I don't even know for sure if there is a representative here this evening, but checking on that, that doesn't appear to be the case. All right. And I'll check if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this request for the three actions, the comprehensive plan guidance change, the zoning change, and the plat approval. Doesn't appear to be anybody from the public for this item this evening. We have the request before us. We've got three separate actions, a resolution approving the change of guidance in the comprehensive plan, an ordinance changing the zoning, and then a resolution approving the plat. And I would note that on the resolution related to the comprehensive plan change, because it is a comprehensive plan change, that does require a supermajority vote, which in the case of the city council, it's two-thirds. It would have to be four of the five councilmembers. With that, we probably do want to take the actions in an organized order, in the sense of you don't want to rezone something before you've guided it. So the first thing to consider would be the resolution attachment three, regiding the property. Councilmember Graff?
I would move to adopt a resolution approving the proposed amendment to 2040 comp plan. Future land use, ma'am.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Schroder to approve the resolution regiding this property as low-density residential. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Graff?
I think the proposal makes sense with the land use that is around the property. I did stop by on the way here tonight and talked to a few residents who were outside, and they were not opposed to it. So I think there's a variety of opinions on this. But I think from the information we have, I see no reason not to approve it.
Great. And as the second or councilmember Schroder?
Well, since the Planning Commission had approved it, and then the staff is recommending it, that also, and I've also been to the property, I feel comfortable going ahead with it.
Other discussion on the motion?
No.
Just in response to the communication we got from the Planning Commission member in regard to this, I think that one of the concerns raised was sort of loss of small bits of open space. And I think the challenge we have is, as a city, is we can't, I don't know that it's reasonable to expect us to be able to sort of gobble up every single one of those spaces in the community. And I also noted in reviewing that after receiving that communication, that actually Applewood Overlook is very close to this site and provides a nice amenity to the residents in that area. And actually, Cotton Tail Park isn't that far away either. And so that helped mitigate that concern. I certainly do understand that concern. But as a practical matter, as non-publicly held property, I think it seems like it would be unreasonable for the city to step in and try to interfere with the plans of the property owner at this point. So I just wanted to make that note in response to that communication. But with that, we do have the motion before us to approve the resolution regiding the property from institutional to low-density residential. Once again, does require a supermajority vote. Our four fifths of the council, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, meeting that requirement. The second is an ordinance rezoning the property. That would be an ordinance, also an attachment three. This would rezone the property to, it would be also from essentially institutional to low to medium-density residential.
So move.
All right.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schroder, seconded by Councilmember Eddin to approve that ordinance. This just simply requires a simple majority vote, as does the next action. Discussion on this motion, it's essentially codifying what we just passed in the previous resolution. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That ordinance passes unanimously. And then finally, we have the resolution, the third attachment in attachment three, which is a resolution approving the proposed plat of the site with separating off of this lot.
I'd move that.
Second.
All right. That resolution's been moved by Councilmember Eddin, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve that resolution approving the plat. Discussion on that motion?
No, thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That plat is approved. All right. Thank you to everyone who's been involved in this process, and thank you, Mr. Lloyd, for presenting this evening and your work behind the scenes to get us to this point. With that, then our next item, switching gears from land use to city finances. We have a deadline at the end of this month to certify to Ramsey County our preliminary tax levy budget, as well as our EDA tax levy. And I don't know, Pat, are you introducing this item? All right. City Manager Trudgeon, if you could introduce the proposed preliminary 2025 tax levy and budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm glad to be here to talk about passing the preliminary tax levy, consider the budget, as well as the preliminary EDA levy. As noted, the statutes do require us by the end of the month to pass a preliminary levy, both on the city side and the EDA side. That levy, once established, cannot be raised. It can be lowered. So typically, what we do, we approve a preliminary levy and then use the remaining months in the year to continue to look at the budgets and different components of that, culminating on this year, December 2, to adopt the final tax levy for the city and the EDA, as well as the final budget, utility rates, and the fee schedule, all those things that go into the overall budget here. So as referenced in the staff report, I did present this budget to the council and the levy on August 19. Attachment four in the packet does contain the manager's budget message in PowerPoint. And then we have additional information in attachment five with all the line items and reconciliations. Overall, I am proposing a tax levy of $30,273,603, which is a $1.488 million increase. Translates into a 5.17% levy increase. We do typically take a look on how that affects the median valued home. If I could have the computer up, just to note that the median valued home rose from 349,900 to 360,500. And I have a mouse there. So the impact to the single-family home is as follows. Oops. Mouse. Okay. So as noted on here, the property tax levy would go up $9.39 per month for the median valued home. And for the EDA levy, eight cents per month. So for a total of $9.47 per month, which is an annual change, if you add both those together, $113.64. This increase is certainly impacted by the levy amount that I am raising. And is there a different number?
Yeah, the numbers in our packet doesn't match what's on the screen here.
The annual change.
The annual change here.
The annual change in the packet is the city only, which is $112.68 in the RCA.
The printed RCA is city only, and the thing we're looking at is city and EDA.
Well, EDA is in here.
Yeah, that's true.
It says EDA in the packet.
Well, it's easy enough to do the math and check it.
I just count them a difference.
So I'm not sure what, I'm not seeing what the difference is here.
Oh, I see.
So the total dollar change annual in the packet says 112.68, which is only 12 times the city number.
Yep. Okay.
On your presentation, it says 113.64, which is 12 times the sum, the 9.47.
Yeah, that's the combined number. So that line item in that chart.
The way it's listed here, they're different numbers, but it's kind of confusing us.
Yes.
It makes sense now.
Yeah. And we have monthly and yearly numbers, and it does get confusing. So our apologies. Okay, just want to make sure we have the right number. We can agree on that.
All right.
As referenced from the finance director, there is a memo talking about some of the legislative changes that do impact our levy. Certainly, our increase in levy certainly is the biggest impact, but there had been some changes in the law that also does impact that. So that overall increase, and this is referenced in the packet here, and both the property value increases and the legislative changes is about $39 of that increase. And the city budgeted tax levy is about $74. So certainly, the majority is still related to the tax levy increase, but there's some other factors in play and why that median value changed there. We talked a lot about the EDA at the last meeting, and that is actually keeping the levy flat, but there is a slight impact on homes, as mentioned in the packet. Last meeting, we heard from the Finance Commission, and they did recommend the budget as presented by the city manager. Finally, I would mention that at the meeting on the 19th, the city council did talk about three items, about possibly considering more. One would be to add the HR manager position, which is estimated to be a cost of $146,000. And there's information in the budget memo. Also about adding funding for Tubman. The number that was used is $20,000. And I have some information in the packet about both Tubman services, as well as additional information about NYFS program. They have something similar, and that's in attachment nine. And the third item is the possibility of increased council pay. Never really a conversation about exactly what that would be, but maybe a 3% COLA. So there is some information in the packet in attachment 10 that just indicates where other cities are paying, trying to get a cross-section of Ramsey County and some other cities. So I would note that if the city council was considering at least adding the HR manager and the Tubman, the levy increase would go from a 5.17% to 5.75% levy increase, just for your information. So once again, the EDA board did approve that you, as serving as the EDA board, a preliminary levy of 364,856. In the end here tonight, after some questions, we certainly want to adopt three resolutions. One is to adopt the preliminary tax levy. One is to adopt the preliminary budget. And then finally, one to adopt the preliminary EDA tax levy. There's a lot of information in the packet. I know you're fairly familiar with it, but I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have. Our finance director, Michelle Petrick, is here as well. If we do talk about adding some things to the budget, we're prepared to kind of calculate the correct numbers. But if we don't do that, then the resolutions as they stand would work. So with that, I'll pause and see if there's any questions. Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there questions from the council for staff on the proposed preliminary budget and tax levy? Councilmember Strong?
Not necessarily question, comment.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, we've got the presented numbers. We've got some things that have been brought up for discussion. We can have discussion on those, or we can go whichever direction the council wants to. So why don't you kick it off and see which direction we go?
Worked with kindergartners. You have to be very clear between the difference between a question and a comment.
It applies sometimes to councilmen.
I just wanted to, I know we did speak on this, and this was somewhat at my behest, the HR manager position. I wanted to just give a bit more voice to that request and give some support for why it would be beneficial. I think when you look at, there is a minimum 42% turnover every year in staffing, and there are two full-time HR people. That is a crazy amount of people that are being hired and sent away every day. I think that it's really important to realize that, so we have two people who are full-time HR, and Ms. Olson is ending up doing a lot of that. And we have spoken about that being additional concern. But I wanted to make sure that the recruiting, the onboarding, engagement, and retention are huge pieces of an HR manager. And this is really important to me as we look at how do we achieve our SRE goals. It's really hard to find that time to be a dedicated recruiter in spaces where you're going to find someone who maybe doesn't look like everyone else in the building. And it's a very intentional process of creating relationships, going to job fairs, making connections to colleges where people who maybe don't look like everyone else are. And that takes some time and builds some relationships. It might not be the person who you see this year, but it might be the person you see next year or the year after. So I just wanted to make sure that as we look to how do we diversify the people who work for us, not to underestimate the value of that HR manager and what they bring to that process. Not only that, if you do bring on people of color who are in a largely non-people of color staff, we need to make sure they receive adequate support and follow-up engagement. They find ways to feel like they belong and part of a team. And it's not just a given. You don't just bring someone on and hope they stay. It's a very active process. And so in speaking with Ms. Olson and Mr. Trudgeon, just wanting to make sure you're aware that in addition to the turnover, there are significant changes happening in paid family leave, emergency safe and sick, or earned safe and sick leave time, and the Fair Labor Standards Act in regard to how paying and compliance goes. And some of those compliance penalties have increased substantially. They could be up in the millions of dollars. And I realize we have an attorney to help us, but you have to know and have the bandwidth to ask the questions, to know, to make sure that you're complying. So I just also spoke with Mr. Trudgeon about the possibility of funding this as a July 1, 2025, so for one half of a year. But it is an ask that we would expect in 2026, even if we choose not to fund now. But my suggestion was that we consider it, because I don't know how we'll make headway toward our staffing equity goals unless we have someone who's really strongly dedicated to that as a process.
All right. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Other thoughts from council members or questions, certainly? Councilmember Braden.
On, on that subject, I think it, reading the data in this and thinking about it, that some level of support might be important. Certainly, a lot of work has shifted to that HR component, but a huge part of that has been the part-time staff. So when we look at that turnover rate, a lot of that is part-time folks. So a student getting hired in April or whatever gets onboarded almost exclusively by the park and rec department, say if they're doing park and rec job, or if they're lawn mowing, whatever, and then they leave. It's not quite the same as hiring permanent employees. And so I also wondered about whether we could use temp service to do a push and do additional support in a time window when there is this significant amount of hiring that happens as a different way to address this, at least for the short term. As I look at our levy, certainly, it's, you know, not perfect, and we compare it to other cities, and we look pretty good, but that's not our, people don't care, right? We look at the impact with the increase in housing values as the pie shifts. It's, it's a, it's a pretty big hit. So I want to be cognizant of how much that needle is moving, and this, this would be the biggest thing. And I also then look at the 2026 budget and the number of things that are here that are, that would be baked into 26. We were looking at four hundred thousand dollars before we blink an eye, pay an employee COLA, whatever, right? That was just baked in from what, what we have this year. And so I'm concerned about how all that adds up, but I'm also thinking about what's a different way to spend less, but have an impact on maybe the biggest increased workload for HR staff.
Well, and I, I think, you know, there's, there's a couple of different things that are, that are being talked about in this conversation. And certainly, what Councilmember Braden talked a lot about was sort of that, the onboarding of, of, of part-time staff and seasonal staff and things like that. What I saw in the memo was a recommendation for a manager to do a, a sort of a higher level of, of activity, which maybe then, you know, can, can allow the people sort of below that level to do some more of that stuff because of the fact that some of those, those tasks have moved from other departments into the HR and administrative department. And so I'm reading that a little differently, like, like I'm not sure that just hiring a couple more temps for part of the year actually gets to what is being, being asked about as, as something that needs to be addressed in the memo from the point of view of a manager. I mean, if, if, if the request was, you know, we need to, we need to have, you know, three more temporary people in the summertime or something like that, then that would, that would align better with kind of what I'm, I'm hearing from Councilmember Braden, but that's not necessarily what I was reading in the information that was in the memo. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to balance those.
I agree with you. And I'm actually, you know, preliminary levy, prepared to actually say yes to the position and have further discussion around this, understanding of how it would impact the assistant city manager position as well as HR. But anytime someone takes the workload off of someone who's further up, then that's going to free that person up to do some of those more strategic pieces, right? Somewhere, we're talking about shifting work burden or adding support for that work burden. So I, I, I agree with your reading of that. I agree that I'm thinking about how do we address that maybe differently without as big of an expense. But I'm, I'm prepared to put it in the preliminary and then have further discussions and have greater understanding of how that big picture works together, just to be clear on that.
And I was gonna say, Councilmember Graff, as somebody who hasn't weighed in on this.
Just, just a thought. I mean, so I'm hearing that perhaps it would start in July then, so it wouldn't be a full year?
I think that's a proposal.
Yeah. Okay. I, I see the need for it. I just am not clear in my own mind where that would fall. I would say, I would like us to hire that person carefully, obviously, and I know we all have talked about that before, so I would probably prefer hiring it in the last half of the year and going back. And also not impacting the budget quite as strongly.
And I think it's a valid point that, that still the full amount is something that has to be looked at in 2026 then, yeah. So that, that, that adds on top of basically the, the four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So it, it's, it's part of what has to be taken into account for sure. Councilmember Strong.
I just wanted to, I, I know it seems somewhat elementary, of course, the depart, Parks Department, but the amount of things that have gone into HR in the last few years, there's a new hire notification that needs to be signed by everybody and copied. And yes, it's very administrative. You could probably have the HR assistant do it, but hopefully by having the HR assistant doing them, the generals can do more recruiting, and then the, you know, there's just, but yes, there are always some, I think we're putting a lot of the management duties in this situation on Ms. Olson, and then it ends up taking, we, we are all human, and we just, there's a, a max on what we can do. But I just want to make sure, there's just a lot of administrative duties that go with this safe and sick leave and upcoming with the paid family leave and other things. And as like people like to say, they're unfunded mandates. They don't come with, here, help, this will help you. But we have to also make sure, yes, those people are there for a short time, but it doesn't change the burden of getting them all in and out of the system. It's still a process, so.
Your, oh, Councilmember Schroder?
Um, yeah. You know, I don't think there's any question that the different items we're talking about are important. I don't think that's the fact. But from where I'm coming from, I'm still, people are still reeling from the big budget from last year, the nine percent. And the city manager did not have this position in his initial budget. He, he acknowledged this is something we needed to look at going forward. And so I guess I have a tendency to go towards the not putting it in next year and just going with the original budget that was also approved by the Finance Commission. So they approved it the way it is, and the city manager had presented it without these items. And so I've, and again, I'm not debating that any of these items we're talking about aren't important. It's just, you know, when and how, because there, you know, people have to pay for it, and that's what it comes down to. And, you know, trying to give people a little bit of a break from last year is what I've been hearing a lot. And if you look at the, the emails people send, they're all talking about trying to keep the property tax down and help us and that kind of thing. So again, it's, to me, it's more of a, can we push this expense a little further to give people a little bit of a breathing room for now? So I'm, I have a tendency to go more towards the, what the city manager proposed originally.
All right, I think we'll circle back to that as we get to the point of looking at motions. We did also have the, the suggestion by Councilmember Braden in relation to Tubman funding, and I know he's been doing a lot of research and, and contributed, you know, to getting some of the information that's in the packet as well. So I did want to give you an opportunity, Councilmember Braden.
Thank you. And I would like to acknowledge that Mr. Trudgen and our police chief, Scheider, had a meeting with the, with the folks at NYFS as certainly a longtime partner of ours, who have started a program that really is similar in some ways. And before they'd had that meeting, Chief Scheider had spoken about the importance of Tubman and the services they provide for victims of domestic abuse and other things like that, that as, as the only ones were doing that, and actually had not had the opportunity to work with NYFS at all. So at this point, NYFS's program started in April and was not something our police department was using. They had a conversation last week and said, well, we certainly could be using some of this. One of the critical differences is that Tubman provides 24-hour service, and a lot of these crises that, that police end up at for domestic abuse victims are not happening between eight and five. And so the chief feels through the information I've gotten from the city manager that, that is still a very valuable resource for the people in our community that are in crisis situations, and, and really the only way to get them the support that they need at that time. So I think I'd thrown out last time in here, twenty thousand dollars. The ask from Tubman was forty-four, but acknowledging that there's going to be a transition here. We'll see where NYFS's program goes, but it's still something, when, when Chief Scheider says this is important and important to these folks in this critical life stage, I, I want to find some way to ensure that that is still there. And I think the city manager's looked at some funding things he can talk about, maybe, but I, I don't want to speak for you the whole night, so.
He may defer to you to speak for him. No, I, I don't know. Mr. Trudgen?
Mayor and council, I think of last meeting, or last time we talked about this, it was, you know, considered maybe additional levy funding. One thing we could look at is public safety aid. We have, I think, about sixty-nine thousand dollars undermined budget of remaining dollars if everything was spent as proposed in the city manager budget. And just recall that we have the mental health coordinators funded through PSA, and we have an outstanding grant on that, so hopefully it'll be much more than that at the end of the day. But we still have sufficient funds if you wanted to use public safety aid to fund the Tubman. That'd be kind of a one-year thing. It's not ongoing money, and then the conversation would happen again next year, obviously, looking at continued funding. It is eligible under the guidelines for public safety aid from the state, so it's certainly well within the parameters that we could spend that, those dollars for Tubman if the city council would like.
Right, and just a note, too, that in the memo from Tubman, they had talked about how Ramsey County had used some civil forfeiture funds for a one-time forty thousand dollar contribution of funds. And I did check with staff, and under our regulations for our forfeiture funds, we really don't have the ability to use them for that, this purpose, so we wouldn't have the ability to do that. But I also was thinking about the public safety aid and forgot about that when I asked about the forfeiture, because that was front of brain. But anyway, that's good, good information to know. Councilmember Graff?
Thanks for the extra information. That's very helpful, because as you know, I have been working with NYFS for several years, and so I was aware of the new program and the DOJ grant that is for five years. And so that's why I was really focusing on NYFS and this issue, because they are Ramsey County, and Tubman is more independent county. However, your point of not having 24 hours a day is very important, and I did talk to the CEO, and we won't be doing that really soon, because that's a complicated process for NYFS. So I think, given that, I would like to see it funded some way. I don't have the answer to that, but I will bring to discussion.
Right, Councilmember Schroder?
Just a question, what would happen if we didn't fund it? Would the services stop then in Roseville?
I can't speak for Tubman. I think they would continue to try to provide the services as much as possible. They've had to lay off staff because of reduced funding, so there might be less availability. What that exactly means for Roseville is kind of hard to say, but certainly their resources would be shrunk. So whether they contract staff more or just try to make do with what they have and probably be overwhelmed in the amount of cases, make the best they can. But it's not as if they would stop serving our community, just maybe not consistently.
And then on the flip side, if we funded, is that funding for all these, like, you know, more people in Hennessy County? Or are we, are they going to dedicate more services to Roseville then?
We would enter into a contract where we would, you know, stipulate what our expectations are. That forty-four thousand dollar amount came from the amount of people that they served in the city of Roseville.
And specifically to legal aid?
Legal aid, yes.
And, and crisis management and legal aid. So versus some of the other programs that they offer, either in other counties or for a region-wide services.
And in talking to other city administrators that do have this contractual agreement, it's, it's based on the amount of clients that are served, and there's a whole contract as part of that. So if there was some approval for funding in part of the budget process, we would eventually need to bring forward a, a contract between us and Tubman outlining our expectations and what services they provide. It'd be a one-year contract, but it'd be something.
And, and one more piece on that funding. Would then part of that actually then, could NYFS do part of that? And as, as Councilmember Braden said, only fund twenty because, instead of doing forty-four, because some of the other services can be put over to the other organization? Is that a possibility?
I expect that'll happen.
Yeah, so NYFS isn't asking for any additional funding.
Right, well, that's what I mean.
They have, they have the grant, so we're able to use it right now. There's no cost to the victim, certainly, and no cost to the city at this point to do that. And that's how the Tubman model used to work. There was external funding sources, and it just happened. And so I think it'd be the same way with NYFS, at least for the next five years. Beyond that, who knows?
Right, because I, and I, and I feel the same way, because we have a relationship with them right now, and the more we can utilize their services and be part of that organization, I think I, I would prefer that if, if there's a way. But I do know that we're lacking in that one area. And so if there's a way just to cover that one particular area and not anything else, if that's a possibility.
I do think Councilmember Schroder, as we approach this issue next year, will have a year of information, working with both NYFS's new program as well as Tubman at some level, and we can kind of report back, saying, here's what we've seen, observed. Is it a fifty-fifty split? Is it seventy-thirty? What, you know, what is it to help us, inform us of what our next steps are? And it's too premature to guess what that is at this point. But we'll have some more data that we can actually look at and try to figure out what's the best arrangement for the city of Roseville.
And just to clarify, so that, that it sounds like, you know, the primary daytime service provider would essentially be NYFS, and then for those, those
Potentially, yeah.
Twenty-four hour off-hours kind of things, it, it may be Tubman, is what I'm kind of hearing, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think that it, you know, it probably makes sense to try to be supportive of, of Tubman so that they can provide those services in Ramsey County, especially in those off-hours. It helps that it would not necessarily for one year be, be levy funding, and then we can revisit it over the course of next year and see what makes sense. So potentially, that could be something where all we would have to amend is our budget and not levy request if this item is something the council wants to, wants to look at funding for 2025. And for that matter, I'm not sure that there's a prohibition against increasing our preliminary budget at this point, because it's a budget.
Yeah.
And as long as the funding isn't through an increase to the levy, the only thing we can't increase after this month is the levy.
Yes.
So even if we didn't put it in our preliminary tonight, conceivably, it could, it could be added, as long as it's not dependent on levy funding that hasn't been offset otherwise.
Good point.
All right. Council salary was the third item, and I, I guess that's Councilmember Braden again.
Right, right back to me.
Yeah.
I got to bring this up because I'm not running again, so. When, it, it was, it was curious to see City Manager Trudgen, again, and did a fair amount of work, looking, the initial list that I'd seen was the list on the bottom of our, of our presentation, showing several cities of, generally our size and maybe bigger, some of them are on the metro, and their salaries were generally significantly above ours. And then he went and got some Ramsey County salary examples. My catch with those Ramsey County is several of them are smaller cities, like Little Canada and Falcon Heights and things like that. So we end up looking pretty good in Ramsey County with the city of Maplewood being significantly above us and others being kind of in our range or a little below, but again, often with a, a smaller city and less complication of the work. But when we look at that bigger, when we compare ourselves to Diana Hopkins, Richfield, we're significantly behind. So I, I think for me, it makes sense that this has not been changed since 2002, I believe, that there, that some increase is reasonable. And I've heard arguments about whether this should be an ongoing thing or whether the council should be making a, taking a vote anytime they want to increase salary. And I, I'm going to defer to you guys, you might be around. You know, do you do fifty dollars a month and then do three percent a year after that? Do you do a hundred dollars a month and say, we're done? I think those kinds of numbers are reasonable at this point to, to move, move the needle some. But again, if you look at Ramsey County, we're a little bit ahead. If you look at those other comparables, then we are a lot behind.
I appreciate, I appreciate the information. And one thing that I was thinking about was when we look at other positions, and I'm going to pretend I know anything about HR at this point, so I'm looking forward to being corrected here. But I, I imagine that, that it's fairly typical to, to do sort of a work-done, time-used analysis and get an understanding of sort of what that looks like, and then, you know, see what kind of hourly rate theoretically is appropriate for that.
Then we should double it.
Well, what I thought might be an appropriate exercise is to actually kind of figure out how much work we are doing, you know, through perhaps a little bit of a time-use survey of the council members and, and, exactly. And so, and, and try to get some sense of that and then determine what might make sense from a policy perspective. The challenge is, is that I don't know that that can necessarily get done before November 5th, which is the intervening election that has to happen by state law before a change in council and mayor's salary can go into effect. And so, but I just wanted to put that out there as something that might be helpful to me, and perhaps even more so to justify to the public any changes if we did some of that kind of analysis, instead of just saying, well, here's where we rank relative to other people, and so we should be there. I mean, I, I don't know that that feels like it's as thoughtful as it probably should be, especially given that it hasn't changed since 2002. So. So that's where I'm kind of coming from on this. I understand sort of the time pressure with the wanting to have an intervening election if you're going to put something into effect. But I also understand the notion of trying to do, do it right and do a good job by way of the public dollars. So I'm, I'm of a couple of different minds at least on this, but I wanted to put that out there and certainly open it up to the rest of the council for some, some feedback and discussion. The other thing I just wanted to note is sometimes it is mentioned that it's expensive to become a council member, to run for office and all of that. And I'm not sure that I look at the council salary as some sort of reimbursement for those expenses as opposed to compensation to public servants for their time to do the job. And so that would be the perspective that I would come at it from and try to avoid sort of that reference to, to trying to recoup campaign expenses because I think the mechanism for doing that is outside of the council compensation world, but rather in terms of seeking, you know, seeking support through campaign finance laws and things like that.
Which of the cities did we use as comps for the, when we did the comp study for the other?
So on that list, we had, this isn't a complete list of all the comps, but Edina, Richfield, Brooklyn Center, Fridley and Oakdale.
And we did that for, we looked at those cities pretty carefully because of population size. Roseville's a little different than many of the cities in Ramsey County because of our increase in population during the day and the services we have to provide. So I think, I think just looking at Ramsey County doesn't give us a full picture.
And I would mention in Ramsey County, Maplewood was also a comparable city, so that's the only one in Ramsey.
And that's the one that's quite a high.
That's the one that's high.
Significantly higher.
What are they doing in Maplewood? I don't know. Anyway.
They're actually eating their gas in mouth.
So, you know, I'm open to, considering that, I just don't know what, how that's going to work and what, where the rest of the council is on that. So where is the rest of the council on that? Councilmember Schroeder.
Actually, I agree with Councilmember Groff that I was thinking the same thing that when we did the comp study, would we not be part of the employee group in a way and that we should be using the same cities? It just seems, it seems if we were picking a different group, it looks odd to me, you know, and, oh, we're going to pick this group instead of what everybody else got to use. So to me, it would seem like we'd want to use the same. And, and I know you, you know, comparing, but that's what we do in the comp studies too, is you, you look at like jobs where other cities are doing it. And so that's why if you can get something close to Roseville, that's, that's typically one way to look at it versus just, you know, how many hours you put in. Because my guess would be you're going to find different people take different lengths of time to do things and so it's a little tougher to come up with how many hours does like, and I imagine a mayor's time is you probably put in twice as much.
Well, that's where we make the big money.
Are his billable hours more expensive too?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, so I guess I'd go along more with Councilmember Groff's.
So that, that sounded like a proposal to increase Roseville's council salary to something over ten thousand dollars next year?
No, I'm just saying that's something if we're looking at it.
Yeah. I think you need to do it gradually and I, I mean, we haven't done this since two thousand and two, so you don't do a huge, in my opinion.
Well, and, you know, my suggestion related to the time study was just to get a feel for how, how out of whack we might be. I mean, if we're making, you know, four dollars and fifty-one cents an hour, you know, yeah, maybe there's a, that's a signal that something might not be right there. The other thing is, you know, how, where is it appropriate to compare the, sort of the hourly rate for a council member as, you know, I mean, just because other cities pay their council members a lot, I don't know if that necessarily means, because it's a political decision to a certain degree too.
Sure.
And what's palatable to their taxpayers, whereas, you know, one could argue perhaps there is some basis to say, you know, and it's a policy decision, obviously it's a decision of the council, you know, perhaps the council salary should be equivalent to some level within the city workforce, you know, just say, as an example, you might say, what's the median step three?
Concession stance.
What's the median step three across the whole city? You know, what is that? And maybe that's what the council should be. I don't even know what the number is, so maybe that's not, but I'm just throwing an example out.
We get on the steps, we're going to make a lot more money.
No, no, no.
I think that would go over real poorly.
No, I was just going to say, I was thinking in the middle because I think there's five steps. So step three was kind of in the middle of the range.
Yeah.
And that's how I picked that. But I mean, certainly there may be a, a much more sensible basis for it, but I was trying to come to something that was more than just they're doing it this way, so we should do it that way. Or, you know, or, you know, should it be more analyzed or analytical in terms of how we approach it once again?
That was sort of how we did it with the comp study for the other.
Well, certainly, yeah. I think the difference is that a lot of, a lot of the pay of other types of employees is based on market place and competing in the marketplace, whereas council salaries, I think are sort of a specialized thing that once again has a political factor in the decision-making that I don't know that you can just say because they pay, you know, ridiculously high council salaries in Maplewood that we should try to emulate that.
Or that we're going to move to Maplewood.
Why are we all not living in Maplewood and running for council?
Let me tell you.
We, of course, we hear the reasons for that every time we interview people for commissions. This is all the benefits of living in Roseville that we all enjoy, so.
That's true.
So I don't know where we want to go with this, this particular topic and whether we want to try to do something before November or if we need to spend more time thinking it through or where we're at. So that's, you know, once again, I don't know that we have to decide it this evening unless we want to include some number in our levy, unless we try to offset it at a later date. So, council, what do you want to do with council salaries?
Well, as someone who does this during the day, unlike Robin, she does her thing, I do mine. I was like, well, if we did like a three percent for five years, we would come up a lot closer to the others and of course they would continue to grow as well.
Is that mic not working?
My mic is not on? No.
You just have to be closer to it.
Okay. If we did three percent for like five years, we would get about eight, closer to eight thousand. And then at some point, I don't know that it should be automatic though. I think that an annual, you know, to, even just to go to the COLA though, this has, hasn't been part of the COLA and I'm not suggesting that it's always three percent because then it could get quite high because three percent does add up. But for, over time, at least during an adjustment period, it didn't seem like it would be too unreasonable to say this year we're going to go with three percent. If we went with the seven thousand and you divided it by fifty-two, you'd be at a hundred and thirty-five dollars per week, which would mean if we worked five hours a week on this, which for some weeks, yes, some weeks, no, that'd be about twenty-seven dollars an hour. And so if you think of someone who has a professional responsibility, that seems a little bit low for what we're asked to do and how we're asked to govern. Of course, as you know, when you first start out, it's a lot more than five hours a week. You have to catch up on everything you didn't know that's been happening for years. It'd be twenty, thirty hours. So, and then you're in that four dollars range. So just wanting to be aware that, you know, it's pretty easy to do a quick judge and say, okay, twenty-seven dollars an hour. I don't know that many people in a high professional position would say that's an acceptable dollar amount and I'm not making that judgment on that. I'm just saying if we are looking, you know, what that would, a quick. But, you know, it's three percent on each year for a few years to get us closer to the others seem to be a reasonable amount because it does accumulate over time.
So what you're suggesting then is after five years, then revisit it?
I think, well, I don't even know it needs to be automatic any year. Just say three percent, but just saying that after-
A plan for three percent over five years.
A plan and then maybe a cap, say, okay, once we get to that, you know, then it's up to the next council, whoever's on it, to make a decision. But I was thinking more just if you started at three percent, especially because there's, you know, seven thousand dollars, it's probably going to be a pretty, pretty small amount, but you're not going to, in that percentage.
I guess that, I bet that doesn't even move the needle.
No, it, you know, maybe goes us to point five, point one-eight percent. I'm not sure.
It's eleven, it's just about twelve hundred bucks.
Michelle was saying, no, it does not.
We estimated about thirteen hundred dollars and if you add that, it would still be five point one-seven percent.
I'm not even sure why we're arguing about it.
Because it's a hot potato.
It is a hot potato.
We are setting our own salary. It's a political thing, so, and I completely understand that. I mean, there, there were in past years, you know, long discussions about spending similar amounts of money to support the Miss Roseville or whatever it was many years ago, so, and that was a huge controversy, so. It's always interesting during the budget time how these discussions go.
I would prefer some sort of decision made tonight if we can.
Well, we'd certainly need to add that thirteen hundred bucks to the levy to make sure we don't exceed it, although rounding is, is a thing, but, all right. So I think we may have an answer on that one, maybe?
Am I hearing three percent for the twenty-five budget?
I would agree with that.
Certainly will ultimately have a motion to make, but I'm just trying to see if.
I don't, I don't care. It's much smaller than I was going to get you all, but.
Well, you can say that because we don't know.
I know, I know, that's why I said it, trust me.
But thank you for bringing it up.
All right.
What did you have in mind, Councilmember?
Like a hundred dollars a month.
Which would be about nine percent at this point?
I hadn't done that math. It's probably over that. I think we're making around five fifty, something like that a month. So it's closer to fifteen, seventeen percent, whatever. What's that?
What would that do to the levy? Would it throw up? Probably not.
So then, taking-
Five hundred times twelve.
Taking the cities that are in this list that are in our comp study, they average out at ninety-six, I don't know if I erased that already, ninety-six hundred dollars, ninety-three hundred dollars. This would move us from seven to eight thousand two hundred, still well below the average, at least the people on this list that were from our comp study, right, pulling out those cities. So you're still at the bottom, except for Fridley.
And that would be about a six thousand dollar levy.
Six thousand and it'd be five point one-nine percent levy increase.
Point zero-two. We could argue about it a long time, but.
But it would be, it would be portrayed accurately as a nine point whatever percent salary increase for council members, the big money grab.
Without a raise since two thousand and two, though, I would like to point out.
That's true. We could probably divide it by that many years.
And then, and then it's less than one percent.
Yeah.
Saying you froze your salary.
I'm willing to have that conversation with residents.
And that was a total of what, three thousand dollars?
Six thousand.
For all of us? I mean, I'd be comfortable doing something in the middle too, saying three thousand total between all of us and figuring it out. I just, I think it's good form for us to move towards something. I don't know that we have to get arrived immediately. I think it, but I think it, it speaks to also the value, you know, we keep, we keep putting the employees and making sure that they're being compensated correctly and fairly too. And so I want to make sure that the people who follow us also feel like this is a valuable job that they're doing for the city.
Well, I think one of the topics that was brought up and at some point in this conversation or related to it was the notion of sometimes it can be difficult to be a council member because you have childcare issues and things like that. And certainly an additional hundred dollars a month would help with childcare expenses during those hours, evening hours and things like that. So that might be something to see.
Saying it doesn't need to increase assumes that the people who are running for and making an office are independently secure financially.
Right.
It assumes something.
And at least who can run, who can actually do the job.
Yeah, in a variety of ways, right? But, so, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think being at the bottom of the list is good. I don't think being second from the bottom is bad, but.
The other thing is a lot of us are on other committees, like I know Councilmember Schroeder's on the Ramsey County legal local governments and there's meetings with that. I'm on the NYFS board and I'm on the Miss Roseville board, so.
You're putting in a lot of time.
We have a lot of responsibilities during the month other than the council meetings and the strategic planning, which is coming up quite a bit now. Anyway, that's my.
And all the social events and going to, you know, the parks and ribbon cuttings and all these, yeah.
And the build park, the building, the park installation.
So if I were voting and I'm only twenty percent of the vote, I would say to move the levy up six thousand dollars and we can have further discussion because you can always go the other way. I really don't think a hundred dollars is an unreasonable increase over twenty-two years.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
All right.
He made a motion.
I'll say.
All right, let me track this here. So we got the motion on the council salary. All right, and that was made by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Groff for additional hundred dollars a month. Is that how it was? Okay. Discussion on the motion. As the maker of the motion, any additional discussion?
I'd make it more for the mayor, but the mayor seems hesitant, so I'm going to leave that a hundred to him, too. I think I've spoken to this enough. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Groff.
I think I've said my name, son, I think.
Any additional discussion? I, I think we have beaten this proverbial dead horse. With that, we've got the motion before us to increase council salary by, and increase, let me change it, increase the levy.
Yes.
Not to exceed by six thousand dollars.
Yes.
To allow for the possibility of increasing council salary by a hundred dollars a month for the five council members. Right. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. So we have our first adjustment to the proposed not-to-exceed levy. Do we want to talk about a budget increase? Or do we just, on the Tubman subject, if we don't have to fund it with a levy, do we want to just kind of set aside the Tubman subject for further discussion and not specifically adjust the budget right now for that since it doesn't, we're not precluded from doing that?
That's fine. I don't, I don't know what's going to change significantly, but that's fine, we can wait and see if something does change, as long as there's funding for it.
Should we include it and then have the potential of having it removed later if something were to change?
Well, I was wondering if we are sure on a dollar amount at this point, if we want to have some more conversation about that.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we see a two thousand dollars, but I'm not sure what that's based on.
It was twenty thousand.
I had proposed twenty, understanding that we were trying to watch how much we were spending, looking to ensure that the service continues, but not, that would be the most of any, we have the, we are provided the most services right now due to some other factors in our city, but that would be the biggest contract they have with the Ramsey County City. So trying to, trying to balance that out, the amount of needs we have and costs that are being incurred with our budget and some other factors and NYFS and so, that's where I came up with that twenty. It is not scientific.
Do you want to move something on the budget at this time?
Sure, I'll move that. Twenty thousand dollar addition to the budget to support Tubman.
Is there a second?
And this is the discussion to potentially, the continued discussion, or are we adding?
This, this would add the number to the proposed budget for twenty twenty-five.
It can always go down.
But not, it wouldn't affect the levy at this point.
So using non-levy funds.
Using non-levy funds, using PSA dollars. Yep.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on that motion, once again, to add twenty thousand to the budget for twenty twenty-five using non-levy dollars to pay for it as a, as a contract with Tubman, Councilmember Ratten as the maker.
Again, I think we've talked about extensively, I don't know where I'm coming from on that one.
All right. Councilmember Strawn is the second, or?
Nothing further.
Any additional discussion, Councilmember Schroeder?
Again, I, I would want to get more information on this because, again, I do think I want to see how much NYFS is going to play in this and this, this number to me is just pulled it out of the air number. And so that's why I, this number is a little, you know, when I, when I asked the city manager how, how much this twenty-four-hour service after hours happens, we didn't have actual numbers on how often and how many, because I was trying to get an idea on the, how, how much of the service are we utilizing to get an idea on the cost because obviously it's important. So I think we're missing a lot of information, so I guess I would, I'm going to make it clear that we would, if we add this in, that we would continue to have a conversation on it because I want to make sure that we get some actual numbers and thoughts and I know we need some time to do that.
I think that makes sense, Councilmember Groff.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Schroeder. Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Schroeder. It's hard to make these decisions without data, and I really would like to, Councilmember, I hadn't spoke with the police chief, but I would like to kind of get some from our firm members. However, I don't want anyone to call at midnight in a terrible situation and not have legal advice, so...
Absolutely. Even one is...
Even one is too much.
Yes, I agree.
Well, and I think the point of the motion was that, that because it's a budget adjustment, it can go up or down after further discussion and analysis after today. I think we're just trying to put the placeholder in there, as I understood it, so...
And I just want to make sure it comes back to the council, you know, that it's just that stuff in there, we don't, yeah, so it needs to come back.
Hopefully amongst the five of us, we won't forget about it between now and December.
Yeah, well, you never know.
True enough.
Yeah, with, with the, with the usage, and thinking about this as something that would be viewed again by whoever's here in a, in a year, right now, the NYFS program's been in place for almost six months, and they've expended $0 serving Roseville residents. And if you look at six months of service from Tubman, it's $22,000, right? So, let's write last...
Full service from Tubman, right.
Yes. So, looking at, looking at that and thinking about transitioning and how our systems might need to change, making sure that piece is there, not just the 24-hour piece, but all pieces, because right now, we don't use them at all at NYFS. It, for me, that's, that's a reason to do something, because we don't need to be a city that is leading folks in these crisis situations without the support they need.
Yep.
And I think part of that was a ramping up time, because that came in...
Oh, I understand. I'm just saying that, that, we aren't on that ramp yet for, for the city of Roseville, so...
All the cities that are involved with NYFS are getting there, but not there yet.
And I think it's worth noting, too, this is for, starting January 1st of 2025, so we will not have any funding between now and, and the end of this year for this from the city of Roseville. But I know that the, or I think from the memo, the funding from Ramsey County Attorney's Office is for 2024 only, and that's $40,000 that ends at the end of this year. So, maybe this is a way to help supplement that transition, presuming that Ramsey County doesn't, you know, isn't able to do it again or whatever. I think the other part of this that's important to keep in mind is that there'll be another legislative session, they'll be continuing talks with the county as to how they do their business, and so we'll have a lot more information, you know, next time we're looking at this in 2025, besides the discussion we're gonna have later this year yet on the same topic. So, between all of that, hopefully we can adequately serve people in the community with, as was noted, these crisis situations. With that, we have the motion before us to add the 20,000 to the budget for the Tubman services as outlined. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. That adjustment is made to the budget. I think we're up to, of those three topics, then we're up to the HR manager, back to that. Does anyone want to make a motion? This would be a motion to amend both the budget and the tax levy in some fashion in relation to this item, if, if that's the desire of folks on the council.
I'd make a motion to amend the tax levy and the budget for six months of an HR manager.
I'll second that.
All right, and six months would be about $73,000 if I do my 146 divided by 2 correctly.
To rent us up for the 20, 25, 26.
And as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
Nothing further.
Okay. Councilmember Groff?
I just think we need to start addressing this earlier rather than later, so I'm, that's why I'm supporting the six months in 2025.
All right. Other discussion on the motion?
Of support, because I think we need to keep talking about it, and maybe that's the best solution, but, yeah.
All right. No amendment to go to a full year? All right, just checking. With that, if there's no other discussion on the motion, this is a motion, once again, to add $73,000 both to the tax levy and to the 2025 preliminary budget for the support of a half year of the HR manager position as outlined. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes 4 to 1, with Councilmember Schroeder in opposition. All right. Then, we have some resolutions that we need to adopt, unless there's any further amendments we want to make to budget or tax levy on other subjects that up to this evening have not been approached. All right, so, the first resolution... Where are the resolutions?
That's been one.
So, the first one is the levy.
Levy, yep.
Don't we have to pass a budget before we have a levy?
Mm-mm. Legally, you only have to pass the levies.
I understand. I mean, just philosophically, wouldn't you set your budget before you set your levy, but I guess do either way. It's all happening in the same evening, so the order of things may not really matter that much, although we have done the budget first before. But anyway, all except whatever motion the council member wishes to make.
Do we have the updated numbers first?
So, for the levy, we added $73,000 for the HR manager and $6,000 for the city council salaries, an additional $79,000 of levy. That's a total of $30,352,603.
Head nod from the finance director, too, so...
What was the number again?
So, $30,352,603.
Got it.
I will move approval.
Second.
All right, so that is the levy resolution. Moved by Councilmember Atten, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on that motion, Councilmember Atten?
I think we've talked about a lot.
All right.
I'm ready to go on.
Councilmember Strawn? All right. Any other discussion on that motion? All right. With that, we've got the motion before us to adopt the resolution setting the not-to-exceed levy for city of Roseville for 2025, as noted. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Opposed.
All right, that passes 4 to 1, with Councilmember Schroeder in opposition. Next, we have the resolution related to the 2025 budget.
And we did add $73,000 for the HR manager, $20,000 for Tubman, and $6,000 for the city council mayor salaries for a total increase of $99,000. That leaves us with a budget total of $73,509,845. $73,509,845.
All right. Is there a motion on budget resolution?
I make that motion. Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Atten to adopt the resolution setting the preliminary not-to-exceed 2025, no, not to exceed, just the preliminary 2025 budget, at the numbers indicated by city manager Trudgen. Discussion on the motion as the maker, Councilmember Groff?
No.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Atten?
No, thank you.
Any additional discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Opposed.
All right, that passes 4 to 1, with Councilmember Schroeder in opposition. That brings us then to the EDA levy. I don't believe we've made any changes this evening to the EDA levy, unless somebody wants to at this point. That resolution is the third resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder to adopt the proposed EDA levy, and that, once again, is set at $364,856. No change to that. Discussion on the motion as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Strawn? As the seconded, Councilmember Schroeder. Any other discussion? Once again, this was before the EDA. The council has the EDA at our last meeting and recommended to ourselves for approval. I want to just thank again the staff for going back to the, to the table on this one and bringing it back with the, with the sharpened pencil, as it were. With that, we've got the motion before us to adopt that resolution setting the EDA not-to-exceed levy for 2025. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously, and that resolution, that levy are set. These will be the numbers that go on the notices that go out to taxpayers for the truth in taxation hearing at the November, end of November timeframe.
November 25th.
The notices will go out early in November. The meeting will be late November, and we'll, that'll be on the city's information as to when that is, as well as on the notice itself.
It's actually on the calendar, too.
It's on the calendar and the request to council.
November 25th.
25th, right around Thanksgiving. With that, then, that concludes our budget items this evening. Financially speaking, we do have another item here, which is a consideration of a way to pay for water meter deposit refunds, as discussed previously by the council, through a transfer from the sanitary sewer fund balance. And I believe Finance Director Petrick, you'll be introducing this item?
And you pretty much covered it.
That was, that's what's on my agenda item here.
I appreciate people talking, because I have a cold and sound like a frog, so, um, so the cash balances as of the end of '23, the water fund had $837,986. Sewer fund had a little over $3,007,000. The outstanding water meter deposits as of last week were $1,446. As properties have been sold, we have been refunding the meter deposits, obviously, and not getting new deposits in on the new homeowners. When this was first discussed in March, the council didn't want to, want us to consider just refunding when properties are sold, because that could take 40 to 50 years. And I don't disagree with that. I looked at alternatives. I looked at what if we refunded a third each year? That would make more work for staff. In some cases, the meter deposits are so small, because people were in their house when we first started doing deposits. So, it just made sense to do it all at one time, either the fourth quarter of this year to get it cleaned up in the same year, which made sense to me. The other thing is, the water fund has been paying for all the costs related to the meters and the radios that read the water that flows through, but the sanitary sewer fund derives its revenues from the flow of the water, just in a different direction. So, it's, it made a lot of sense to me that funds be transferred from the sanitary sewer fund to the water fund, which is where we hold the deposits, and get refunded on the quarterly utility bills that we bill for water, sewer, storm, and recycling. Questions?
All right, and this did go before the finance commission at their last meeting, and they concurred with that recommendation?
Yes.
Right? And I don't know, can we put that chart with the, with the balances up on the, I don't know, if somebody can put it on the overhead camera there? Just because when we talk about numbers, sometimes it helps folks to, to see the actual numbers. Thank you. All right, and we will try not to have any questions from Ms. Petrick, because she would benefit from not having to answer.
You like water?
No.
Good.
All right.
Just don't make me talk.
To give a break to Ms. Petrick, we'll check with the members of the public to see if anybody from the public wishes to speak to this item. Does not appear to be the case. What's the thought of the council? Councilmember Schroeder?
Well, I think it makes perfect sense to do it all at once, and, and how many, how many households are we talking about here? Like, like thousands, right? I mean, so if you think about it, when she talks about trying to break it up and you have that many, that's a lot of work.
It's a lot of...
So, I mean, and that's, yeah, and so why, that doesn't, and then if you really think about what would you save, you wouldn't, you'd be spending more money on the time. So, it, it makes a lot of sense that we would just go ahead and do this.
We have about 16,000 accounts, both residential, commercial, and apartments.
Yeah.
Commercial, we could, we looked at it, but the dollars are so small.
Right. No, it makes sense.
Right. And one of the reasons I put the fund balances up there is that the sewer fund is quite healthy, even beyond what's needed for its operating reserve level, although obviously there are other things that go into, that, that is used for. And the water fund is, is not as healthy, we'll say. And so, this does make some sense as a source of funding, it would seem, and certainly if the finance department is okay with it, that, that's a good endorsement for a plan. So, we have the request before us. Is there a motion from the council?
I would make that motion.
Second.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Atten to authorize the transfer of funds and the payment of the refunds as outlined. I think there was, the question was raised, is, is this something that can just be a credit on the bill?
Yes, that's what it's, we're not cutting 16,000 checks. It'll be a credit on the fourth quarter.
Perfect, perfect. Very good. So, we've got the motion before us to authorize that plan. Any discussion on the motion as the maker, Councilmember Groff?
Well, I just think we have to consider staff time here, and it just makes sense to clean this up in this calendar year and not take more of their time cutting small checks and doing, well, keeping that could go on for, as you said, 40 or 50 years. That's an ongoing cost that would be exponentially greater than what we're doing right now.
And as the seconded, Councilmember Atten?
I agree.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes unanimously. That plan is approved. All right, Ms. Petrick, get better. Next?
She's not done yet.
Well, I, we're, I think Mr. Trudgen can handle this one. How's that? Executive decision.
There is one modification to the delinquent utility accounts. We're removing 2,000 Herschel.
All right.
They aren't delinquent.
All right, noted. Thank you, Ms. Petrick. Now, go home and get better. All right, with that, we have item 7B before us, which is to consider certifying unpaid utility charges property tax roll. Mr. Trudgen to introduce this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is something we do routinely each quarter and to certify unpaid utility and other charges to the property tax roll. This is our method to make sure we collect money that we have expended through the purchase of utility water and sewer capacity that we do need to recover. So, in front of you tonight is a resolution to consider certifying those listed, with the exception of 2,000 Herschel, to the county, to the property tax roll. This actually is an opportunity for a public hearing, so we did notify everybody that was on that list, that this is an opportunity to come forward and contest anything that they, they may want to. I think the 2,000 Herschel, they did come before the meeting, and it turned out that they did pay on auto pay, so it just wasn't caught. So, with that, we would like you to consider the resolution, certainly consider a public hearing. I would note also, there is one very large delinquent taxpayer there, that is a hotel.
Ratepayer?
Ratepayer, I should say, that is a hotel. This is something that we do consider as part of our hotel licensing, and we're, just as a quick update, we are in the process of sending out those applications and doing inspections in October, with the hope of bringing those forward in November for consideration, and certainly, failure to pay utility bills is a, is a major issue with granting that license, so we'll have to see how that sorts out. But I just wanted to call that out in case you're curious which property that was. So, all we're asking tonight, after the public hearing, is to adopt the resolution without 2,000 Herschel.
All right, thank you. And that, this being a public hearing, we'll officially open it up for members of the public to speak to this item. We have a throng of people in the council chambers this evening to complain about their utility bills and delinquency. So, with that, we'll close the public hearing and move to counsel consideration of this item. As was noted, this is a fairly routine item. Normally, it has in the past been on the consent agenda, but because of the need for the public hearing aspect of it, on the wise guidance of our attorney, that's why it's handled as a public hearing these days. With that, we have the request to adopt the resolution certifying those delinquent accounts, with the note that 2,000 Herschel is not on the list any longer.
So...
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Atten, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to adopt the resolution certifying those properties, the delinquent amounts to the county for their property collection with the property taxes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes unanimously. Those, that is approved. Those items are certified. We don't have any council minutes this evening to consider. That would bring us to our consent agenda. Mr. Trudgen, would you give us an outline of the items on our consent agenda this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $1,813,589.72. Agenda item 10B approves a massage therapy establishment license for Birch Tree Bodywork LLC at 2499 Rice Street. Item 10C approves an expenditure for a new boiler purchase and installation at the Roseville Skating Center. Item 10D approves corrected rates for the city cafeteria benefit contributions for city employees. City council previously approved these rates on September 9th, but it was discovered after the approval that the contribution rates were miscalculated, so the rates in your packet tonight are the correct rates. Item 10E approves a resolution awarding the contract for the De La Wasso sanitary sewer lift station, project to Pember Companies, for $535,715. I would note that the RCA has, under the motion, has the wrong lift station there, so I just want to make it very clear, this is for the De La Wasso sanitary sewer lift station. Then finally, item 10F adopts a resolution authorizing the Roseville Economic Development Authority to apply for metropolitan council livable communities affordable home ownership funds on behalf of the city. And that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Is there a motion on the consent items?
So...
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Groff to approve the consent items as presented, noting the correction on the lift station as outlined. Is there any discussion, Councilmember? Councilmember Strawn?
I just wanted to check in to see, you know, how many, Mr. Trudgeon, how many massage therapy licenses this brings us to?
You know, I was going to check, Councilmember Strawn, I think we're 27, 28, about that amount.
And have we had any additional concerns or any additional developments on the property that was changed ownership?
I really can't comment directly on that, I think we are monitoring that situation.
Okay.
But beyond that, I can't really comment.
All right, any other discussion on the motion to approve the consent items? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and I would note, actually, the agenda doesn't mention it, but we did have in our meeting materials minutes from our September 9th council meeting.
That's right, we did.
It's number nine.
Yeah, but normally, there'd be a 9A that would say minutes from such and such, and so that's why I skipped right over it, because I hadn't seen that. But, we do have them before us and presented, so, are there any changes or corrections to the September 9th minutes as presented? If not, a motion to approve those would be in order.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Schroder to approve the minutes of our September 9th council meeting as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and those minutes are approved. And that then brings us back to the future agenda review. Mr. Trudgeon, if you would go through the items upcoming on the future agenda?
Yes, so, not an official council meeting this Wednesday, but strategic planning focus group for the city council. This will just be the city council attending, along with our consultants. That'll be from 4:00 to 6:30, that will be in the Willa Room downstairs, so go down the stairs and take a right, past the Historical Society, and you'll find that room. I'll be there at the start to make sure everything's all set up, but otherwise, you will be on your own for about two, two and a half hours. After that, our next council meeting's October 7th, we're going to have the recycling contract, consider potentially awarding a contract for carts. Also, I have some right-of-way vacations, as well as receiving the utility rate study update from Ellers. On October 11th, this will be our first joint department head and city council strategic planning meeting, that'll be on Friday, October 11th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And for that meeting, we'll be at the Fireside Room at the Oval. I'll remind everybody, as we get closer these days, because we do switch around a little bit. Then after that, on October 14th, at kind of the work session, we have Ramsey County Commissioner Mary Jo McGuire there for presentation on a couple topics. We also will receive from staff at Ramsey County a presentation regarding their EDA, HRA legislation, they're looking to do something again this year, and they're trying to do their due diligence prior to coming down to the legislature and talk to cities and answer any questions, and I think, I imagine, gain our support. And then also, we would talk about the Police Department Staffing Allocation Study, kind of looking at beyond just staffing, also shifts and everything else, and how we're allocating our resources, in a way. This will just be an introductory conversation about that work, and then we'll go from there, depending on the conversation. And that's what I have for future agenda.
And just to be clear, the Ramsey County did not, that legislation did not end up getting adopted last year.
That's correct.
And so it's not that they're going back again for the same thing, in the sense that they already got it, they're going back again because they didn't get it last year, among a lot of other things that other people didn't get as well. All right, with that, any questions on the future agenda or items council members may wish to add to future agendas, or council reports and announcements? Councilmember Strawn?
Council report, wanted to thank all of the folks who helped put on the Wild Rice Festival, it seemed a little bit smaller than usual, but there was some rain at the beginning that kind of threw things off. But as always, it was a really special event, and it was nice to be part of. I noted there was also a Minnesota Wild Hockey Festival at the Roseville Center, they could have used some of the promotion of the Wild Rice Festival for their folks, it was pretty sparsely attended. I did have the opportunity to go to the Habitat Home Open House on Friday, and special thanks to all the folks who were involved in prepping that. If we wonder how our work in the EDA is benefiting the community, it is going to be a single mom with eight children occupying this four-bedroom, two-bathroom home. It was very nice, it had green space in the back and an outdoor space. The other side has not yet been closed on, so exactly who would be living there was unknown, but really lovely to see that support, and especially, there was one individual from the community who had offered financial support, as well as building support, as well, he was there really promoting this, so really great opportunity for us to see our work in action. And then, just an invitation, on October 12th, from 10:00 to 2:00, there's a community event at Choice Corner Auto Care, he's giving away pumpkins. Last year, he gave away 2,000, so we ordered 2,500 this year, and everything there is free, and it's a really great opportunity for community members to kind of come and receive something for free and feel like they're part of the community, so, thanks to him, and make sure everyone knows they're invited.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Groff.
And thanks to all the people who showed up for the park build on Saturday.
The muddy build.
It was a little rainy.
Even rainier.
I know, we had to delay an hour, but people hung around, and then we, at 10:00, we got started, worked in the mud, just wore our boots, and slowed us down a little bit, but we got quite a bit done.
We got a fair bit done.
You got a swing up, and I got a couple things done.
Yep.
Only managed to drop one bolt down the hole, but...
Actually, that's pretty good, that's a good record, yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely, thanks to everybody who showed up to help with that, yep.
It's nice to see the neighborhood gets ill-excited about it, because when things start to come together, you know, it's an exciting time.
Yep, and more to come on that park, as the rest of it has developed beyond the playground as well, yep. I know the site looks a little bare right now, but there's more to come. All right, other council announcements or communications? All right, the only item remaining before us this evening is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Groff, to adjourn. No discussion on a motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?